Good evening, everybody. Good evening. I'll call this meeting of the Woodford County Fiscal Court to order. Madam Clerk, would you please call the roll?
Squire Taylor?
Here.
Squire Gentry?
Here.
Squire Varner?
Here.
Squire Carl? Squire Downey?
Here.
Here.
Squire Blackford?
President?
Squire Taylor?
Here.
Squire Brown?
Here.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. Offering our invocation tonight is Derek Semerall from the Church of Christ. Do you mind to turn on your mic, please, so the...? Thank you.
Our most kind and gracious heavenly Father, we thank you for this day, Lord. We thank you for the rain. We also thank you that the rain has kind of stopped. That way, we can enjoy our little town fair, Lord. Pray that this fair helps us draw close together and that we just enjoy it and are appreciative of all those who put time into it. We're thankful, Father, for the country that we're in. We are mindful of our veterans, those who have sacrificed everything so that we have freedom, Father. Let us remember that every day. Just be mindful of those who sacrificed for us. We're thankful for government. We're thankful for the judge and the magistrates and all those who serve our beautiful county. Please give them the wisdom and direction to govern us and lead us and work together in solving any issues that come up and helping us be better and growing every single day, Lord. We're thankful for all those that serve in our emergency departments, our sheriff's departments, police, EMTs, fire, all those work together, Father, to keep us safe. And we're so thankful for them and the sacrifice they give. Father, we still are mindful of those that were affected by the floods here in Woodford County. Our neighbors in eastern Kentucky hit by the tornadoes, Lord. Help us to be good neighbors, good stewards. Reach out and help them with all the blessings that you give us. Just help us to love each other, Father, to serve each other and to be mindful of each other and try and do our very best to be peacemakers and be an example, not just in this county, but in this great Commonwealth. Thank you always for guiding us. In this prayer, we ask in your son's name. Amen.
Amen.
Amen. Thank you so very much. If you are able, please rise for the pledge of...
I pledge allegiance to the right of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you very much. I'd open up the floor for any public comment. Anybody wishing to make a public comment? Seeing none, we'll move on to the approval of the minutes from our special meeting of May 13th and the regular meeting minutes of the same date. Are there any additions or corrections to any of the minutes? Seeing none, are there any objections to approve the minutes as presented? Seeing no objections, I will approve the minutes as presented. Committee reports. We had our special meeting committee of the whole prior to this meeting, and we took up the fiscal year 25-26 budget. We also approved the acceptance of a donation in the amount of $37,945, under no special conditions or restrictions for the... to be used as recommended by the Emergency Management Director. We also authorized the Emergency Management Director to advertise and begin the bid process for portable safety barriers as recommended. We had a motion to reject the bid received for the light project as part of the Woodford Theater modernization work because that bid did not meet our procurement policies and specifications. So, we rejected that bid and authorized the maintenance supervisor to seek quotes from contractors. The community stadium lease, we approved the renewal of that community stadium lease agreement between the Fiscal Court and the Board of Education under the same or similar terms contingent upon the final review of the county attorney and the judge executive. And we moved that forward as an effort to work with the new superintendent. We welcome Dr. Lori Jones and look forward to working with her on this and many other items and working with the school board. The discussion of the Crittenen Cabin, we approved the relocation of the Crittenen Cabin to the county park and directed the county attorney to work on a proposed draft lease with the Woodford County Historical Society. We also authorized the Emergency Management Director to order the appraisals on subject real property to potentially acquire on behalf of the county. We also discussed the request for a track bobcat. I think, Madam Clerk, you did find that was on the state price contract. We also authorized a bid in the event that that was not on the state price contract. And then finally, the committee of the whole recommended the first reading of ordinance 2025-06, the fiscal year budget for 25-26. So, upon that recommendation, I would entertain a motion to have the first reading of the ordinance 25-06 fiscal year budget for the fiscal court. Motion, Besquire Brown. Second, Besquire Taylor. I would open up the floor for any discussion on the budget. Seeing none, and seeing that it has been recommended unanimously from the committee of the whole, all those in favor of having first reading of same, please vote and signify by saying aye.
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 All those opposed, nay. And that motion carries unanimously. Mr. County Attorney.
Judge, this would be a summary reading of the appropriations for the upcoming fiscal year 25-26, beginning with the general allotment. The general includes general government protection persons and property, general health and sanitation, social services, recreation and culture, bus services, debt service, capital projects, projects and administration. That total is $34,141,792.03. Under your road fund, that total is $4,058,515.03. Under your jail budget, that total is $3,447,490.02. Under your local government economic assistance fund, that total is $6,905.43. Under state grants, that total is $9,594,926.64. Under federal grants, that total is $3,831,871.25. Under disaster emergency services fund, that total is $277,778.95. Under flood services, that total is $304,132.81. Under the opioid abatement settlement fund, that total is $498,053.68. Under the sheriff's asset forfeiture, that total is $630,000. Under the county clerk permanent storage fees, that total is $55,700. Under the American Rescue Plan Act, that total is $3,705,531.54. And under debt services, that total is $423,913.92, for a grand total of $60,976,612.8. This being a first reading, it does need to be advertised for second reading, which I guess, do you intend, Judge, to occur because we just have the two weeks at our second meeting in June?
Yes, sir. That will be it.
All right.
Thank you, Mr. County Attorney.
Advertising this. Okay.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, Judge.
We do have a couple event requests, so I'd like to invite Kendra Wadsworth from Simmons Elementary to come up and talk to us about the Run for DC 5K event that's scheduled for September 20th, 2025.
Hi. I'm a fifth grade teacher at Simmons Elementary. This will be our 14th year minus COVID of the Run for DC. It's our fundraiser for our DC trip for the fifth graders to go to DC. This in April, and we... well, we just took this last group, but the next group, that'll be the 15th trip to DC. And like I said, this will be the 14th run. We... last year, we had the most registered runners we'd ever had. We had 2223 maybe registered runners, and we did really well. We did very well. And so, this is new for me coming here in front of you all. We... I know advertising of the races is, you know, kind of what you all want to know about. We do hang the banners. I have banners that we hang at the school and around town and on the courthouse. I do post the race on Voices of Rales. It's on the John's Run/Walk Calendar. We have yard signs that we put along the route. We go out and put along the route, and typically, that sparks conversation with the neighborhood. And people seem to be pretty familiar with us coming in September. And any other questions?
Well, Ms. Wadsworth, first of all, thank you for teaching fifth graders. I admire you and respect you greatly for doing that. And this is a great event in our community. One of the things that we have done is, because there have been questions in the community about how these things are approved, we've decided that anytime it touches the county road, that it'd be a responsibility for us to approve it. And our goal is to be proactive in our approval and help you promote the event and support it and all those sort of things. So, I would entertain a motion to approve the Run for DC 5K event in Woodford County on September 20th, 2025, as presented.
Motion.
Motion, Besquire Gill. Second, Besquire Blackford. Are there any questions or comments for Ms. Wadsworth? Seeing none, all those in favor, please vote and signify by saying aye.
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 All those opposed, nay. And that motion carries unanimously.
Thank you.
Thank you. You're more than welcome to be excused as well. Let's see. Next, on our Zoom, we have Mr. Dan Irwin. I believe that's correct, right? And if you would, Mr. Irwin, talk about the Bourbon Chase in Woodford County, October 3rd and 4th, please, sir.
I've done these in person. Never be a Zoom, so it's interesting to kind of see everybody's little bodies on the screen there, but thank you for listening to me. Yeah, this is... we've... if you're not familiar with Bourbon Chase, it's a 200-mile relay race where kind of teams take turns, you know, starting... we started Jimbean there in Clermont, and we ended Lexington. We kind of bottom weave our way through various distilleries, some small, some larger. And this year, we're looking at approximately about 250 teams, which will bring about 3,000 individual participants through the entire basically middle part of Kentucky there, including Woodford County. So, yeah, so we're... you know, we start at 5:00 a.m. on a Friday, which is kind of interesting to start on a Friday, but it's a two-day event, so we finish on Saturday, probably about 9:00 or 10:00 p.m. on Saturday there in Lexington, right on the property of the Lexington Brewing and Stilling Company there. Yeah, we're... you know, we're looking to get approval to have this event again. We've been enjoying having it here for, you know, I don't know, it's been going, I think, 15, 16 years now, maybe 17 years. I started with Ragnar last year, so I don't have the exact dates on that. But we get tremendous outpour of support from all the communities, whether it be from the mayor, Mayor Grayson there in Midway, or, you know, Emily's been... Emily Downey with the county's been wonderful to work with the last few years. So, looking to hopefully get this approved and keep these great relationships going with this great event.
Well, thank you, Mr. Irwin. And so, I would open up the floor for any questions that the fiscal court may have as... for the approval. Will you go before the Midway City Council, Mr. Irwin, and talk to them and ask for their approval as well?
If that's necessary, we'd be happy to in the same form.
All right. And could you talk a little bit about... first of all, I think we all know the Bourbon Chase. We appreciate it. It's a pretty established event. But just maybe some of the things that you all do to make sure, especially with the 5:00 a.m. run, that you're keeping folks safe and your communications maybe with our public safety officials?
Yeah, so basically, what we do is we go county by county, city by city, working with, you know, each entity. We also work with KYTC, be permit, you know, obviously permit the roads, whatever their requirements might be. We've never had an issue with, you know, you know, working with them. They're always very pleasant and want us to help with them. But, you know, we put out signs. We'll have VMS boards as well in more busier areas. And the really interesting thing about the Ragnar is that even though we might have two, you know, 3,000 participants, we only have 250 teams. You know, we're going to spread out those 250 runners from 5:00 a.m. until about noon. So, a lot of times, I've stopped and talked to people in towns where they say, you know, "I didn't even know a race was going on. I just saw a couple of people run by." And that's the interesting thing, even though there's so many people involved. So, you know, we make sure that our participants are well-versed in the rules. They have to follow all the laws and the rules of any other pedestrian, stopping at crosswalks, running on sidewalks, running on shoulders against traffic when sidewalks are not available. We do work with each, you know, each district, each area, whether it be a city, county, or KYTC, where additional PD or police might be needed at crossings and stuff like that. Yeah, so basically, we just... we would do, you know, make sure that we communicate with each of the jurisdictions.
Well, thank you, Mr. Irwin. Let me ask the court, do you all have any questions for Mr. Irwin? Yes, sir. Squire Downey?
Just a question. I know runners obviously have different times and pace that they will be running, but based on the schedule, do you have a timeframe estimate about when we would expect most of those runners in Woodford County, based on the 5:00 a.m. start?
I'm going to look to the left here because my chart, we have all the lists of all the times here, because Woodford County is really, really large. So, at least as far as how we're running through it, because we kind of zig and zag our way through it. But so, starting approximately, you know, we expect the first runner, as of right now, things would change obviously a little bit, because what we do is run this thing called a simulation. It's very accurate, probably within about 5% either way. So, as of right now, with... based on the 250 participants that we expect, excuse me, teams that we expect, we should be in Woodford County about 1:00 a.m. in the morning. It's kind of in the more rural sections of it, just as you basically cross over the... cross over the county line there just after Wild Turkey. And we expect runners to be through, all the way through Woodford County. Let's see where that ends here. Pardon my delay here. That's going to be probably right around, probably about 7:00 p.m. on Saturday. So, that's again, that's a rough guesstimate. That's given a little leeway on each side. It could be a little earlier, it could be a little later, but that's kind of the rough guesstimate of when we'd be around. If that answers your question.
Yes, it did. Thank you. Other questions or comments? Seeing none, is there a motion to approve the Ragnar Bourbon Chase Road Relay in Woodford County on October 3rd and 4th, 2025, as presented?
Motion.
Motion, Besquire Gill. Second, Besquire Varner. I'd open up the floor for any additional questions or discussion. Seeing none, all those in favor, please vote and signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, nay. And that motion carries unanimously. Thank you, Mr. Irwin. You are approved, sir.
Thank you very much. I appreciate it.
Thank you, and we wish you all the best with your event.
All right. Look forward to working with you guys.
Thank you. So, now that we have those run/walk event requests approved, I'll move on to the reports of the treasurer. Madam Treasurer, please.
Tonight's balance is $16,411,115.83.
Thank you, Madam Treasurer. Thanks for all your hard work on the budget. I know it's been a lot. Appreciate you and our whole team. Anybody have any questions for the treasurer regarding the financial report? Seeing none, we appreciate you. Next up, solid waste and recycling.
Yes, we have a couple of grants that we need your signature on tonight, Judge. The Waste Tire Grant, which is a $4,000 grant we receive yearly, and like, get approval for the judge's signature on that agreement, please.
Is there a motion to approve same?
Motion.
Motion, Besquire Gentry. Second, Besquire Brown. All those in favor, please vote and signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, nay. That motion carries unanimously.
Okay, and we were successful in getting the Household Hazardous Waste Grant, so the judge has the agreement for that grant for his signature tonight.
And I need motion to approve same. Motion, Besquire Varner. Second, Besquire Gill. All those in favor, please vote and signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, nay. The motion carries.
Okay, and we do have a bid package that goes... coincides with this Household Hazardous Waste Event for the judge's signature for us to put this event out to bid.
Is there a motion to advertise and begin the bid process for the Household Hazardous Waste Event? Motion, Besquire Taylor. Second, Besquire Gill. Squire Downey, did you have something?
Just a question. Do you have dates for those yet?
It'll depend on the company. I'll have... it's usually September. That's in my bid spec. It's kind of like, we prefer it in September. That's just been our month, so that's where I'm shooting for, sometime Saturday in September.
Thank you. All those in favor of the advertising and bid process, please vote and signify by saying aye.
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 All those opposed, nay. And that motion carries unanimously.
Okay.
And Madam Director, I have your signed documents. You may approach and grab those if you would like.
Thank you all for the budget process and for our truck. We really appreciate it.
Thank you for doing the diligent work to explain that need. Thank you. Director Chandler, Emergency Management?
Judge, I've got a brief flood recovery update.
Yes, please, sir.
As of 3:00 o'clock this afternoon, when we were on the call with KYM, we still are awaiting determination on the state's request for public assistance. So, all the recovery costs up to this date are still out of the local taxpayer's pocket. KYM is continuing to house multiple residents. We requested to execute a data sharing agreement, or the paperwork to start to execute a data sharing agreement, so that we can exchange that personally identifiable information and reach out to those families. Up to this point, we've known that there are Woodford Canyons being taken care of by the state, but the state has not told us who they are, so we want to make sure that they're receiving all the services and assistance that can be afforded to them. The February flood deadline passed on Sunday. There was a registration deadline. As if we wanted a silver lining, if there was somebody that didn't flood in February, then most... or they flooded in February but missed the deadline, they most certainly got flooded in April, too. So, the ship has not sailed, to use a water metaphor. There's still time for people to register for assistance if they haven't done so yet. The Disaster Recovery Center continues to operate Monday through Friday, 9:00 a.m. to 7:00 p.m. I'm sorry, that's Monday through Saturday, and then 1:00 p.m. to 7:00 p.m. on Sundays. To date, more than $32 million has been obligated to Kentucky. A large percentage of that is to Woodford County based on our damages. And again, that data sharing agreement will allow us to peek a little bit behind FEMA's curtain and recognize what they've been done. So, we continue to thank our partners, our volunteer faith-based organizations. There's still a lot of interest in mitigation programs and specifically buyouts. It seems like every day or so, we add another interested household to the list that is done being flooded. Judge, unless there's any questions, that'll conclude my report tonight.
Thank you. Are there any questions? Seeing none, we really appreciate all your hard work, Director Chandler. Next up would be the Road Department Supervisor Wilson. The request, I believe, at this time is for the bobcat. And Supervisor, I'd just let you know in our committee meeting, Rick Hartley came up, and he talked about the machine that you're looking at.
Yes.
We have confirmed that it is on the price contract. And I wanted you, if you could, Director Wilson, or Supervisor Wilson, excuse me, to just talk a little bit about the need for this track bobcat.
Well, the problem we're having in the cleanup is it's a rubber tire machine that we have, and we're just going through tires. I think we've total loss of tires is six already, and not counting the ones that we've plugged, and hopefully, they're whole. But the track machine does less damage in the yards cleaning up because they've got mud tracks on them, and they don't sink like cars and cuts rut, and plus, it's more horsepower, stouter machine. And we purchased this one, or if you approve it, one with the rock bucket instead of a smooth bucket, and that'll help out a bunch on grading. But overall, I think the machine... well, we could send back some rentals right now because all the rentals are track, and we've had no problems with them. There's no tires. You don't have problems with destroying tires.
So, let me ask the fiscal court, have you all got any questions regarding the request for the bobcat from the Road Department and the Maintenance Department?
We have one older machine that we will surplus, so we may gain some of it back, hopefully.
Absolutely. Well, let me ask, is there any objection from any of the members of the fiscal court to move forward with this purchase? It is unbudgeted. It is not budgeted in the fiscal year 24-25 budget. It is also not included in the 25-26 budget, so it'd be an unbudgeted expense. But I think it's a need that has arisen, that has been identified, that can be justified. So, are there any objections to proceeding with the vote thereon? Seeing no objection, I need a motion to approve the expenditure of a bobcat pursuant to the state price contract in the amount of $87,462.76, again, pursuant to the state price contract as specified and recommended by the Woodford County Road Department and Maintenance Departments. Motion, Besquire Brown. Second, Besquire Varner. Any other questions or comments regarding the bobcat as requested? Seeing none, all those in favor of purchasing same, please vote and signify by saying aye.
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 All those opposed, nay. And that motion does carry unanimously.
Thank you guys very much. Could I take a moment?
Yes, sir.
Introduce my new help?
Yes.
Yes. I told her I wouldn't do this, but I... I'm just doing it because I told her I wouldn't. This is Gail Smith. She's out there chasing place, and I like to say she's doing a great job, but I don't know how many of you have met her so far, but it's been a pleasure working with her. She's doing an excellent job. She's got a lot to learn, just like we always do when you move into a new job. She talks about how hard I am to work for her, but...
And Bo might put somebody on the spot every now and again.
I know. Yeah, I got her. I got her this time.
Well, Gail, obviously, you all know, Gail... Well, Gail, obviously you all know Gail has worked with us as a contractor and a consultant and has helped us in the transition after Tracy Wright's retirement. And Gail, we, we appreciate all you're doing.
Thank you.
Thank you. Anybody have any questions for the Road Supervisor or Ms. Smith? Not quite yet, not quite yet. Any other, any other questions or comments? Seeing none. Supervisor Wilson, I would, I would just give the court some heads up that we're gonna be working on some personnel to add for a personnel order probably for our next fiscal court meeting.
That'd be a big help.
To fill some, some empty positions that you have. And the Road Department has been extremely busy, which is an understatement, but covered up with the flood response and done a really tremendous job. Thank you all.
Appreciate you guys. Thank you.
Thank you. And you're more than welcome to be excused. Thank you. Any other department or agency have a report for the court? No? Seeing none, we'll move on to the general orders and the unfinished business. The Young and New Farmers Grant Program, we have a list of applicants that qualify for round two of the disbursements. Is there a motion to approve same? Motion Basquire Brown, Second Basquire Varner. Seeing no questions or discussion, all those in favor, please vote and signify by saying aye.
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 All those opposed, nay? That motion carries. We need to approve the bills to be paid. Are there any questions or comments on any of the bills to be paid? Seeing none, are there any objections to same? Also seeing no objections, I'll approve the bills to be paid without objection. We do need to ratify the email approval as presented on the additional bill list of five fourteen twenty-five for the PNC Visa Statement of five twenty twenty-five and to include the vehicle for recycling and solid waste in the proposed budget. Those are the email approvals that have already been approved, so I need a motion to ratify same.
Motion.
Motion Basquire Gentry.
Second.
Second Basquire Taylor. All those in favor, please vote and signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those approve, nay. Or that, that do not approve, nay. And email approvals have been ratified. The clerk and I have, we're working on a process by which we would approve all ratified email approvals in a list that would be presented to y'all for your recollection, but that we would take one vote to approve and ratify all email approvals. We'll try that in our next meeting, but if anybody wants to approve anything individual, we can always do that. But it does take additional time when we have several approvals, especially during the flood. I would entertain a motion to approve the transfers as presented.
Motion.
Motion.
Second Basquire Downey, Second Basquire Gill. All those in favor, please vote and signify by saying aye.
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 All those opposed, signify by saying nay. And the motion carries. We need to approve the personnel order. Is there a motion for same? Motion Basquire Gentry, Second Basquire Brown. All those in favor, please vote and signify by saying aye.
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 All those opposed, nay. The motion carries unanimously. We need to approve the draft agreement between the fiscal court and Bell Engineering for the engineering and professional services for the Millville Sewer Line Project, which is a state General Assembly appropriation pending final review and approval of the judge executive, the county attorney, and the Bluegrass Area Development District. Is there a motion for same?
Motion.
Motion Basquire Gentry. Second Basquire Varner. Are there any questions? Seeing none, all those in favor, please vote and signify by saying aye.
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 All those opposed, nay. And that motion does carry unanimously. New business. We've already approved and had the first reading of the fiscal year twenty-five, twenty-six budget. But we do need to approve the sheriff's office twenty-four property tax and franchise settlements. Is there a motion to accept same?
Some move.
Motion Basquire Downey, Second Basquire Gill. We appreciate all your hard work on that, Mr. Sheriff. Does anybody have any questions for the sheriff? Seeing none, the motion to approve and accept is before you. All those in favor, please vote and signify by saying aye.
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 All those opposed, nay. And that motion carries unanimously. Y'all have had the opportunity to review the interlocal agreement among Kentucky's Bluegrass Ad District Counties. We need to approve that interlocal cooperative agreement as presented and authorize the judge executive to sign any and all documents related thereto contingent upon the county attorney's final approval. Motion Basquire Blackford.
Second.
Second Basquire Taylor. All those in favor, please vote and signify by saying aye.
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 All those opposed, nay. And that motion carries. The Jack Jewett tenant house lease is not ready for approval, but it will be at our next meeting, so I want to make sure you all have a heads up on that. We'll have a draft for your general approval and we'll probably authorize that for contingent approval, approving the county attorney's review. Keep that on your list of things to be approved in our next meeting. We do have a resolution twenty-five zero three for the bus transportation for non-public schoolchildren for twenty-five, twenty-six. That's an application for reimbursement for the Kentucky Transportation Cabinet for the transportation of our schoolchildren. I know Squire Gill, you've had, worked on that for several years. Would you like to make that motion to adopt that resolution?
I make that motion.
Thank you, Squire Gill.
Second.
Second Basquire Taylor. Are there any questions or comments thereon? Seeing none, all those in favor of adopting resolution twenty-five dash three, please vote and signify by saying aye.
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 All those opposed, nay. And that motion carries unanimously. Resolution is adopted. We need to move the payroll date from June nineteenth, which is a Woodford County government holiday, Juneteenth, to the payroll date of June eighteenth so that we can get everyone paid prior to the holiday. Is there a motion to approve that payroll date change?
Motion.
Motion Basquire Taylor, Second Basquire Downey. All those in favor, please vote and signify by saying aye.
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 All those opposed, nay. And that motion carries unanimously. Madam Clerk, just to ensure the community stadium lease was approved in, in our committee of the whole, which makes it a binding approval. We need a, a motion to approve the annual standing order for fiscal year twenty-five, twenty-six as presented and relates to the budget. Motion Basquire Brown, Second Basquire Varner. Are there any questions? Seeing none, all those in favor, please vote and signify by saying aye.
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 All those opposed, nay. That motion carries. We also need the routine item of business to approve the annual, annual purchase order designees to allow employees to issue purchase orders. So I need a, a motion to approve that list for fiscal year twenty-five, twenty-six as presented.
Make motion.
Motion Basquire Downey, Second Basquire Brown. All those in favor, please vote and signify by saying aye.
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 All those opposed, nay. And that motion carries unanimously. Madam Clerk, is that the total sum of business to come before this court? Then we'll move into announcements. And because I missed him last time, and I felt like he resented that slightly, I recognize, I recognize the Woodford Sun.
Subscribe, subscribe, subscribe. I will say, we missed it. Last week, we did our annual insert for the graduates. I made an executive decision this year that we were gonna do two blanket the counties instead of just one in November. So everybody in Woodford County got the Woodford Sun yesterday, last week, whether they subscribed or not, which meant every kid that graduated from Woodford County High School got the special insert. Yes, remarkable. I don't know when it started, because I remember them doing it when I was in high school. But how many parents and kids have come back to us over the years and said, that's really my yearbook, you know? So I'm prob, we're impacting the high school sales, their official yearbook, so that's there. So thank you. It's been a great year for us.
Well, thank you.
Now I'm just assuming now that we're gonna nice ad for that, that DC Run-Walk. Because I noticed you mentioned Voices of Tulsa. I'm assuming that the fiscal court will work their influence in some of the schools, get them to buy an ad.
Always be closing. Always be closing. Thank you, Woodford Sun. Mr. Woodford Sun. Let's see here. The Magistrates. Squire Carl.
I don't have anything, Judge. Thank you.
Thank you. We appreciate you. Let's see, Squire Downey.
Thank you, Judge. Just two things. Last week, it was a great reopening of Big Spring Park, a really big turnout. Was able to take our kids down Friday on the last day of school and that was, I, I think, dare I say, the most kids I've seen in that park since the Sunshine Program was in existence there. So it was just really great to see it being put to use early and often, so looking forward to going down there this summer. And then I just wanted to wish a happy early birthday to my wife, who celebrates a milestone birthday tomorrow, so that's it.
What is that milestone? No, I wouldn't do it. Thank you, Squire Downey. Squire Blackford, sir.
Yes, I want to congratulate Carly Blanton for receiving the Larry Black Virginia Memorial Scholarship this year for media and communications.
That's awesome. Thank you, Squire Blackford. Squire Gill.
I have nothing. Thank you.
Thank you. Squire Brown, sir.
Nothing, Judge. Thank you.
Squire Taylor.
Judge, I just wanted to give everybody a quick all points broadband update.
Please.
Heard from Philip Brown with all points today. They're still finishing their field level design and environmental impact review and they're working to finalize their contractor for, for the project. They did want to emphasize that one of those big conditions is, is a fast contractor and getting, getting the project out to folks. And when they do have, have finalized that contractor, they're looking to bring their team leads to meet us, to, to present to the court, so.
Thank you, Squire Taylor. Squire Gentry, sir.
Yeah, just an update on the Millville Water Project where we're at. Kentucky Engineering has sent over the plans to the Frankfurt Plant Board, which is the owner of the water lines. And they have submitted that to the Division of Water, so I think the ball's gonna get rolling on it pretty soon.
Thank you, Squire Gentry. Squire Varner, sir.
Thank you, Judge. Just planting season's still in full force and also Farmer's Market this Saturday at the Kroger lot. They've got plenty of plants, tomato plants for your backyard gardens or, or whatever you need. Thank you.
Thank you, Squire Varner. Mr. County Attorney, sir.
No, but thank you, Judge.
Thank you. I have several items before we, before we read the list of fallen heroes in Woodford County that we will close with today. I'd start off by saying that last week was EMS week. And I'd like to extend on behalf of the court in Woodford County, our thanks to Freeman Bailey and our EMS team, all our paramedics and EMTs for all they do day in and day out. I would like to give a special recognition to Director Bailey, who upon the call for reciprocal help from our counties, went down to London to respond immediately to the tornadoes and took an ambulance crew down there. And they worked to help others in need and it means a lot to see Woodford County rise to those occasions and use our great assets to help other communities in need. And we really appreciate and honor you and your team for all that you do. Thank you, thank you. On behalf of the court, we'd like to congratulate the class of twenty twenty-five in Woodford County. They were a special class and we recognize them and wish them all the best in the future. Congrats to the Woodford County Middle School Track and Field State Champion Team. We are working to have our champions come visit us as we do, but we wish them big congrats. This is Fair Week in Woodford County. We hope everyone will go out and enjoy the fair and we wish the fair well. The Big Spring Park was a very, very big deal and I want to thank the fiscal court for having the vision and the support to make that project a reality. It's already seen so much use, as Squire Downey mentioned, and I think it's something that the fiscal court can be very, very proud of. This past, yesterday was Memorial Day and as we do, we honor Woodford County's heroes who made the ultimate sacrifice on behalf of our nation. So before we adjourn, we will do so in honor and memory of these great Woodford Countyans who paid the ultimate cost. And now we will recognize them each by name. World War I, Lynn O. Broughton. Roger N. Castle. Jewett Cottle. Willie Coleman. Kent F. Faith. Samuel H. Hinton. William B. Howard. William H. Lippard. John B. McDonald. John Henry McNeese. Brack Reed. Gay Reeson. King Richards. James H. Robinson. Raymond A. Showbirth. Clarence W. Trogget. Bert G. Wilson. In World War II. Elmo Howard. Claude W. Aldridge. James W. Baber. Eldred Bain Jr. James M. Baker. James Coke Curtis. Raymond L. Carter. James S. Carter. Elmer Byrd. Vane H. Brown. Leon O. Beasley. Harold Barnes. Robert E. Duncan. Milton O. Elliston Jr. Hugh Stennis French. Fred Groves. Alfred Harper. Joseph W. Harper III. Andrew Earl Harris. Elijah Hayes. Samuel Howard. David Bond Johnson. Harry C. Caffering. Burnett W. Lamont. Warren T. Mason. Spencer E. Mattingly Jr. Charles R. Mo. Arthur C. Minor. William E. Mitchell. James F. Moberly. Stanley Moberly. Jesse T. Mountjoy. Raymond G. Nichols. James W. Owens. Harry S. Raider Jr. Lawrence G. Redden. Edward R. Sammons. Louis Samuels. Claude L. Sailor. Harry A. Showbirth. Leslie V. Spencer. Virgil Stewart. Ray D. Thompson. James C. Updike. Jack E. Utterback. William D. Washington. Ellis R. Welch. Virgil W. Wells. Stuart E. White. Henry C. Wilder. Don Hinton Wilhoit. William R. Wilmot. Cecil E. Wilson. Roy F. Wilson. Willard T. Woods Jr. James William Durham. Korea. Marshall Crowe. Calvin Kenneth Curran's. William F. Harris. Kenneth Dwight Hartley. Arthur Joseph. Joseph Lee Rogers. Marshall Winkfield. Vietnam. Donnie Ray Beasley. Joseph Randall Harris. Edmund O. Wilson Jr. And the last name on the memorial out front, Nicholas James Derrif, who was killed in Iraq in two thousand and six. We are now adjourned in their honor and we thank them and their families for their sacrifice. Thank you all. We are now adjourned in their honor, and we thank them and their families for their sacrifice. Thank you all.